Good afternoon, saints. Welcome to Betty's 2:00 PM Zoom Room Study Session. Yes, a late afternoon virtual Bible study brought to you by way of Healing Hands Ministry as a part of the Open Book Series. I'm Pastor Stevens, the facilitator of this study session, inviting you to open your hearts and your minds as I open the book. Let's get at it. How's everybody doing? I hope you guys are doing well. Good to see you, Clarence. You were doing your deacon duty last week and doing the funeral thing. And Deborah, it's good to see you as always. You're just my little, you're just my friend. Where I go, you go with. I appreciate that about you. I love you for that. You've always been that way, and I just love you for it. Um, I was concerned about Ms. Di. Uh, Clarence is checking on us, so you make sure you do that. As for Betty, folks, well, let's see. Uh, Betty's having much problems with getting, maintaining, uh, internet Wi-Fi connection, so she's, she's having to do some extra work. But she's doing the studies, uh, by way of the YouTube channel, uh, as soon as they're made available. Uh, given that, uh, statement, those of you who view us by way of YouTube, uh, there's been a little bit of delay of getting it uploaded because I'm having some problems with my connector, but it will be uploaded at this point, okay? All right then, well, having said all of that, let's take a look at the text. Last week, we opened up, uh, Clarence and Deborah, we were sitting here just kind of trying to figure out what we could talk about, uh, that wouldn't be so in-depth so that when you guys got back in place, you know, you'll be able to go with us. I appreciate that. I noticed the numbers. I noticed you guys did, did do the study, so that's good. That's good, okay? So, we're looking at Peter.
Didn't get an answer.
Uh?
Hadn't get no answer.
Okay. Uh, Peter, uh, has, um, been really concerned, if you will, about false teachers in the midst of this, uh, diaspora crowd, you know? Now, remember now, these people are re- relocated people, and Peter's ministering to them, and it's important to him that they understand what they're facing. And so, he opens this discussion, a discussion which is the fourth major division in your outline in 2 Peter, false prophets and teachers. Okay, starting at chapter two, moving through from one, uh, verse 1 to 22. Now, we opened last week, uh, looking at, uh, what Peter offers to the readers as a warning against false teachers. That's verses 2, 1 to 3. And so, we did, we did as much of a discussion as, you know, as we could to open it up. So, let's just, since you get Clarence, and let's just kind of look again, because there's some very interesting distinctions along the way if we're listening to Peter very carefully. But I want to make sure that we are putting in place, um, I had a young lady to call me just recently, asking questions about, uh, false teachers and, and being concerned about family members becoming part of ministries and what you think about the ministries. And we need to, we need to really, really make sure that we understand something. Our job as pastors and preachers is not to sit around criticizing other preachers, okay? That's just not what we do. Not, not even with Christianity. Every man has to give a complete ministry, the ministry that he conducts, because there's only one ministry, and that's the ministry of Jesus Christ. So, everything that's done has to sit on the seat, has to be fitted perfectly with the alignment with Jesus Christ. Paul says, "The gospel has already been preached, already been put in place, so there is no new gospel." I was watching a ministry last night, and God was using a trampoline, jumping down in a trampoline, preaching in Carolina. I was like, my goodness. You know, it's like, you know, these millennial pastors, they, uh, I can't blame them, uh, 40, you know, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45. I can't blame these young men for what they're doing, because the baby boomer preachers, us, Clarence, I mean, us, us old folks, what we have left them in, in, in the way of preaching from the pulpit is, is a bunch of stuff that doesn't connect to the New Testament. Uh, many of us have been, grew up on, uh, uh, quartet singer music, and what the quartet singers say, that's what, that's what the preacher preach, you know? And whatever the solos are doing in gospel music, that's what the preacher preach. And after that is just a bunch of stories from the Old Testament and, and a re- reapplication of Moses and Noah and Jeremiah. And so, real solid teachings on Jesus Christ, uh, beyond, uh, the clothes of the sermon. They marched him from courtroom hall to courtroom hall, and, and then he went up gold-gum, sometimes riding, sometimes falling. They hung him high and stretched him wide, but early sun them on. And then when we could do it, then we're done. You know, and everybody shout hallelujah and go home. But in order for us to really understand how to live a prepared life, we've got to examine the apostolic witness, uh, that's given to us on what Jesus taught them, Matthew, Mark, and Luke, and John. And then Paul, who, who carries two-thirds of the New Testament, comes into perspective and shares with us something very good, which is how to live with a risen Savior. Okay? And so, we've got, we've got, uh, the information that we need, y'all, to understand how and what to do, how to live our lives with Jesus as the center of our lives. Paul says, "In Him we live, move, and have our being." How do we live like that? But Peter is also very concerned, uh, about this issue of false teachers who, who come in, will come into the community, and he says, in verse 1 to 1, "But false prophets also arose among the people, just as there will be false teachers among you, who will secretly bring in destructive opinions." Now, listen to that text, okay? False prophets belonged to the prophetic age, the ancient church, the prophets, and then there were false prophets or lying prophets. Israel was notable, noted, had a notable succession of true prophets in her history. God sent men, uh, uh, men after men after men, sent many folk to teach the night, the nature and knowledge and understanding of the Father. I mean, that was, God just spoke to them and gave them information. That's notable and reliable. But then there were also those false prophets who, who, uh, were lying prophets. I think I gave an example last, last week of when it was, it was clear that God was going to take Israel into exile, okay? Uh, the northern Israel was gonna be exiled, uh, scattered among the Assyrians. The prophets began to tell the people that. But the temple priests, "Oh, no, no way, no way, Hosea, no way." And, you know, eventually, people believed that, and eventually, they were scattered among the 10 tribes of Israel, were scattered among the Assyrians. A hundred years later, the prophets spoke of the destruction of Jerusalem and, and the, the Babylonian captivity. The prophets said, "No, no way, no way," the lying prophets. But the serious prophets, the true prophets, your Hoseas, your Jeremiahs, they said, "Listen, this is going to happen." And sure enough, it happened. So, Peter is kind of reminding them of their ancient, their ancestors, and they're having to deal with false prophets. Now, look at what he says next. "Just as there were," he says, he said, "all," he said, "false prophets arose among the people, just as there were, there will be false teachers among you." Now, he makes a fundamental difference now, because you hear a lot of people saying, "It's a lot of false prophets out there." No, it's, it's a lot of crazy people out there. The prophecy, the prophetic age ended, uh, in Jesus Christ. What's out there is false teachers. You got people claiming to be prophets. You got people claiming to be apostles. Instead, you know, they don't want to be reverend, they don't want to be pastor, and they, they want to be, uh, evangelists, and they, they want to be, uh, apostles and prophets, and they want to present as if they have this unique message that God has given them that's different from what's in Scripture. And people are buying into that. Also, uh, among young ministers, uh, today, are ministers who are influenced by Middle Eastern theology, okay? Uh, the theology of the Middle, uh, Middle East is different from Western, uh, Western theology. We believe that the Spirit of God comes in and works on us, indwells and works on us. In the Middle East, they believe that everything is inside and He comes out. It's just, just oversimplified, but that's basically the idea. So, that the, the idea of how you think. And so, I heard a preacher pleading with people. He was saying, "Please deal with your sin. Please, 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 deal with your sin. Stop treating your sin like it's a pet and putting it in the closet and hiding it. Deal with your sin." And I'm sitting here thinking, bless your heart. Bless your heart, son. Calm down, first of all. Christ has dealt with our sins. Help me somebody. Christ has dealt with our sins. The issue of sin is no longer a problem with God. The issue is, will you receive His solution to sin in Jesus Christ? See? The sinful nature of man will always be with us, and the wrath of God is always on the elect and the unelect, the, the sinner and the saint. The wrath of God is on you if you do not maintain and be loyal to the teachings of Jesus Christ. That's the only way we can deal with sin. There, "I can't do nothing. I can't do nothing about my sin, except believe in Jesus Christ and then live according to the way He's taught." That's how you deal with sin. But my sinful nature won't go away just because I'm, I believe, I believe in Jesus. If I don't apply Christian principles, then I'm gonna be in trouble, just like the person who rejected Jesus, okay? That's just the New Testament. But this young man was, he was thinking that there was something we needed to do. We needed to throw ourselves on the altar of God, and we need to do this, and we need to do that. And the manner of sin is settled in Jesus Christ. That's the New Testament. That's Christianity. Ours is to believe, have faith, and live the Christian experience, the Christian teachings. So, see, it's that kind of stuff that grabs people, and they're, they're starting to think and believe, then they'll throw in some prosperity teaching. You know, "God wants all of us to be rich and have money and that kind of stuff," and it get all blended up. See, that's the kind of stuff that Peter is trying to safeguard, uh, the, the community from. He says, "Just as there were false prophets in the days of your ancestors who rose up, so also will there be false teachers among you, who will secretly bring in destructive opinions." What do you mean by secretly bring in destructive opinions? Well, they're part of the body, okay? They're part, they're, they're part of the body, and they introduce new or smuggle in new ideals. And I'm using the, the, the Greek consciousness of the word, uh, uh, secretly bring in, uh, in context, in the original language, smuggle in, uh, introduce quietly, okay? So, it's not like, it's not like it's a bunch of demons with horns and, and tails and pitchfork sticking folk. Don't get that in your mind. It's very subtle and very quiet, and it's very calm. And let me show you how simple it can be. I heard a preacher say, he was trying to say there was no such thing as black and white churches, you know? We're all one. Beautiful thought, beautiful thought, amen. He said, "But the kingdom of God is gonna be integrated. The kingdom, the, the, the heaven is gonna be integrated." Well, wait a minute, now, hold on. We ain't got no black, no white church. How do we get integrated when we got there? Okay? See, Jesus doesn't teach that. Jesus teaches, okay, that we shall be transformed, okay, in His likeness. Paul is very clear on what happens. We'll be transformed in the likeness of, in, in our spiritual body. And those who remain will be caught up, and in a moment in the twinkling of an eye, they'll be transformed. So that when we talk about eternal life, and we talk about the kingdom of heaven, the Bible teaches us, Christianity teaches us, that there is no Jew, no Greek, no bond, no free, no male, no female. We won't be in that arena of, of color and race. And it's like, so you just, you just say on the one hand, "Ain't no black church." Now, there's a integrated heaven. See, subtle teachings that suggest, now, if you stop and think about that, then what Jesus taught about how, about eternal life, for Him, it's different from what He's teaching. That's what Peter was concerned about. That's called false teaching, okay? That's not somebody that's doing something wrong, trying to do something wrong. He just understood it that way, and he's ignoring how Jesus taught it. This is what, this is what's important in our contemporary day, the way we live. And I want you guys to really get this. The way we're living today, we have to listen to the apostles as they talk about Jesus. There is no Jesus speaking in your ear telling you nothing. There is no Spirit of God hovering over you pleading to God and telling you, "That's not true." The only way that we can be close to the Father is in the Son, and He's not here. How do we become close to the Son? What He taught us. How do we know what He taught us? What the apostles gave us. It's called the apostolic tradition. That's in the New Testament, inherent. You cannot know the mind of God until you know Jesus. As we come into the knowledge of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we become more clear, more conscious of what is the knowledge of the Father. That's New Testament. But people are preaching independent thoughts, you know? The Spirit of God spoke to me in my spirit, and I, I had, I, I'm telling you now what God told me to tell you. When you're hearing that kind of language, consider false teaching. So, so to be clear, in terms of study, what is false teaching? False teaching is the opposite of what Jesus Christ taught. Simple as that. It's not about no voodoo, it ain't about no, no, no dog rooms, and ain't about none of that crazy stuff. You can stand in that pulpit and look beautiful and say it beautifully, but if Jesus didn't say it, it's false. That's Christianity. And we are dogmatic about it. That means you can't take Jesus out of my mouth and make me believe that this is what He meant. Now, I heard a preacher say, "When we read Scripture, we gotta remember now. We gotta remember, you can't go by what you read, you gotta go by what God meant." Well, now, how do you determine what God meant if you don't listen to what the people are saying? Well, God will speak to you, and He will show you. So, don't get caught up with the Bible as much as you do prophetic knowledge, prophetic revelation. And there are people who buy into that, uh, that there was a prophetic revelation going around and false teaching, okay? The New Testament tells us very clearly that what we, when we, if we've seen Christ, we've seen the Father. That we, we need to structure our thinking in terms of how Jesus taught. Nothing else and nobody else. What you got to?
Got a question. So, the Spirit dwells with, with the twitters. So, I know you told the twelve to go, go and be in Jerusalem, to be and die with the Holy Spirit, right?
Right.
So, now, do that same Spirit dwell with us or dwell with the Father?
Yes, let me, let me, good question, good question. Prior to the ascension and that promise, Jesus, God believed, I mean, the people of Jews, Jews, Israel believed that God came from out there and came in and showed up and showed out, and then He went back, okay? That's why they said, "Call on the name of the Lord. Call on the name of the Lord, and He will see." Okay, that's Old Testament consciousness. On the day of Pentecost, God reversed everything, and His Spirit now is indwell and lives within us, okay? There is no, "Come, Holy Spirit." He's already here at work within those who believe. What is His work? He leads us to the obedience of the teachings of Jesus Christ. That's His John. You read John, you'll hear John talking about, Jesus said, "I, I'll send you an olive for, a paracletus, another like me," a spirit, my spirit, that was leading God and directing you into all things, okay? That's internal. So, when you hear these people saying that, you know, uh, "The Holy Ghost just came in the building." You know, "The Holy Ghost came in the building on the day of Pentecost." Well, you, you, you're gonna miss it. You know? Let's welcome the Holy Spirit in the church. False teaching. Christianity is very clear. The Holy Spirit is an indwelled consciousness that was, it was promised to us, and it descended on the believers, 120 believers. It ascended on them and stayed with them. He'll be with you, what did Jesus say, "Until I get back." So, we're living in the act then. It's first coming, and the promise of his second coming, and the Holy Spirit is guiding and leading us unto obedience of that which Jesus taught, that He inaugurated on earth and when He died for our own covenants. That's where we are. When we deviate from that message, it's a false doctrine. It's a false teaching. People got all kinds of spirits, the Spirit of God, the Spirit of the Holy Ghost, the Spirit of, of Paul, the Spirit, all kinds of spirits be running around and telling them things. False teaching. I was sitting in my house, and something told me to go down there to Kroger's, and I got down there, and you, you know neck bone was on sale? Ain't nothing but the Spirit. That God, that number, the Spirit of God led me down there. False teaching. The Holy Spirit doesn't have a, a separate ministry from the ministry of Jesus Christ. He is continuing the ministry of Jesus Christ. How does He do that? By leading us unto obedience to all things that have been taught. What we don't understand? The Holy Spirit would lead us to Jesus' teaching. Now, whatever that would lead you to go down there to Kroger's and get them neck bones on sale, I'm glad you found them, but it wasn't the Holy Ghost. False teaching. You know? I was sitting in my, Jesse DuPlantis, PTL. I was sitting in my living room, and God spoke to me as clear as I'm talking to you now. He said, "Jesse." I said, "Yeah, Lord." You know, we talk to each other on a one-on-one basis like that. And, and He counseled me, and I counseled Him. But Jesse, what you think I ought to do? He said, and I told Him what I thought I ought to do. "Lord, you know, don't, don't ask me, Lord, you know." Jesse went on like that for years. Take that microphone out of that man's mouth, telling that lie. All of the, all of the television evangelists were claiming a unique and special word from the Lord. That's what Peter was warning them about. Remember, a while back, a minute ago, we talked about, there's no private, uh, importations. There's no man that can tell you something special that God has said. The best I can do is tell you what Jesus said, and you have to appropriate the truth for yourself when you hear it. And this, this has become really, really, uh, important to me, because I keep getting these phone calls, because there's a young man who's starting now his ministry, and he's got almost 60,000 members in Atlanta. And when I listen to him preach, he's very powerful, very powerful. And I, I believe he's very sincere, okay? But he's not preaching the Christ of the New Testament. He's preaching his understanding and his version. And so, he literally sometimes contrad, I mean, I listen to several sermons, he will contradict what Jesus said. You know, now, that, to me, uh, it's, it's not a, it's not a label. It's just a consciousness. If you want to understand if anybody understands the Bible, listen how they talk about Jesus, or how they refuse to talk about Jesus. Because you see, you can read what Jesus said. Now, Jesus tells us, "Listen," okay? And then you find it. That's what they did, Paul in Desolinaica. Paul opened his mouth and said something. They would search the Scriptures overnight and come back the next day and confirm that they saw what he said. You start opening your book on some of these people, you'll find out what, where the teaching should be. And if all I got is Old Testament, and I'm not dealing with Jesus, you ain't got on the book on that one. We call that a no-brainer, because there's nobody in the Old Testament that can give you redemptive activity and understanding of your salvation, except those who understand salvation in Christ Jesus, okay? Now, here's the deal. Look at this. He said, now, he mentions in, in the end of, the end of verse 2, that they'll bring in destructive opinions. That's very important. Okay, now, what's destructive about me saying, uh, churches, that they ain't no black church, they ain't no white church, and we get to heaven, we gonna all be there together, integrated? What's destructive about that? Well, what, what's the harm? What, what have you done? Well, what you essentially said is that while you're on the one hand stating that there is no, there is no black or white, you're suggesting that Jesus would duplicate this world, and, uh, that God would duplicate this world in, in eternity. And when we get there, it's gonna be a duplication of the world we're in. Now, remember when Jesus was teaching in the synagogue, and the Sadducees came in? And, you know, they didn't believe in the resurrection, they didn't believe in the Spirit, they didn't believe in the apostles, they didn't believe in none of that. And they asked some questions, and said, "Now, if a man marries a woman and has no children, and he dies, according to the Jewish law, in order to keep his name going, she had to marry a brother and have children." And she did. He died. They had a little brother. And he died. So, they asked Jesus. Now, when we get to, when we get to eternal, eternal life, who is here? Who is the wife? Which, which one is the wife? They were trying, they were trying to perplex Jesus, embarrassing him, funny about it, making everybody think he knew what he was talking about. Jesus said, "Ah, you fool. You have no idea what you're talking about, what you're asking. Why would the Father duplicate this world and call it eternal? Over there ain't gonna be a replication of what's over here. We're gonna have transformed, transformed bodies. I ain't looking for my mama in heaven. I ain't trying to see my mama no more. The goal of eternal life is the Father and the Son in that union. So, we shall be always changed into the image of Christ. So, if I'm telling folk, "You gonna see your mama again," that's destructive, because that's taking people, instead of, instead of developing a faith on the basis of the promises of Jesus, they're developing a faith now on the basis of your promises, none of which you have to make. Close to akin to when, when Satan took Jesus on top of, on top of the mountain, he said, "Look up, see all that? I give you all that. How you gonna give me some of your own?" So, see, you need to understand, when, when Peter says to them, "The secretly bringing in destructive opinions," you need to understand sometimes, it, it doesn't have to be anything bold, it can be something very simple. Anything that tilts me away from the teachings of Jesus Christ, which means then that I'm resisting the Holy Spirit, because the Holy Spirit leads me unto the teachings of Jesus Christ. The Holy Spirit does not lead me to, to sell and buy marijuana in the back of the church to get young people involved. To bring the young people back in church, we gonna, we gonna plant a crop of marijuana. You didn't have the building for them. Really? 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 See, the Spirit would not allow, "You shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." God's Spirit that indwells would not allow for that kind of crazy stuff, and people who get caught up in it, it's nothing wrong with it. It's supposed to be that way. Because if I really want to be wealthy and have a whole lot of money, and I'm standing up to tell you, "God wants you to be wealthy," and you buy into that, you just got out of the way so that the real saints can be, can be seen. God is a remnant God. Millions of people left, uh, Egypt with Moses, but not millions entered the Promised Land. The land of promise was only given to those who believed the promise. Billions died along the way, and then they sent in the spies, and all of them, "I don't know if we can do it." They had, they had to wait till they died off, until only the two tribes that believed that the promise of God was real would enter into the Promised Land. God never takes a whole bunch of people nowhere. It's always a remnant. So, that's important. So, that's why Jesus said, "In the last days, these things must be." So, I'm not concerned about people believing that kind of crazy stuff. What I'm concerned about is whether or not those who are disciples of Christ can hold fast and loyal to the teachings of Jesus Christ in the midst of this lawless society in which we now live, okay? So, understand the destructive opinion. Now, here's, here's the big one. "They will even deny the master who brought them, bringing swift destruction on themselves." What does that mean? Well, in the, in the Greek, the word "master" is a way of expressing, and notice it's capital in the Newer Bible Standard, but in the original language, it's the sovereign Lord, the sovereign Christ, okay? Now, here's what we don't do. We do not preach a sovereign God who gave us, uh, a sovereign Christ. We preach a God that can be bargained with. "Lord, if you do this, I'll do that. Lord, if you do this, I'll do that. Give me this, Lord, give me that, Lord, give me this, Lord, give me that, Lord." A sovereign Lord is covenantal. I'm your God, you my people, you know? I give you what you need, and whatever I give you, you're good with it. You submit it, you're good with it. No, you're not trying to work God into getting anything. He's sovereign, so whatever. So, the Christ of God is sovereign. So, if you're willing to chip away at the teaching of Jesus Christ and plug in other stuff, you're suggesting that He hasn't done enough, that He's not enough for salvation, okay? So, you got to, you got to get inside, you got to deal with sin, you got to deal with sin. When Jesus says, "I'm dealing, I, 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 I dealt with sin and covenants. I shed blood for the remission of your sins. I, I dealt with it. I got, I got the sin thing taken care of." The question is, can you believe that my blood was for the remission of your sins? The perpetuation of the Father. God got, he got His pleasure. God got, he got his pleasure out of me dying for your sins. So that no longer, sin is no longer a barrier between man and God. That's what, that's what, that's what Christianity declares, that's what Jesus is saying. So if you run around preaching sin. You should be preaching Christ. For all sin. Don't assume that you serve the Christ Sunday night, Monday morning, you don't sin. Don't you dare assume that. But the remedies of sin. God offers to Christ. And so these false teachers, they were denying, now God, Christ had brought them. They had been delivered, they were a part of, the, the part of the community. But what happened? He didn't come back like he said he was. That's what's really going on. The delayed perusia. The apostles had gone out, y'all pay attention to me now, the apostles had gone out and taught everybody, Jesus coming back soon. He's coming back. After nearly a hundred years. He hadn't shown up. And you know the false teacher, hmm, hmm, somebody lied, didn't it? Yeah, where, where? Where? And then they began to doubt also, oh, wait a minute, hold up, the incarnation. That he was with God in the beginning and then it, nah, that ain't true either. And the resurrection, the res, how could it be, ah, that ain't true either? If he hadn't come back, then none of the stuff they've been telling us is true. And so they began to dismantle the Christ and lessen his role. And that's why Peter is saying to, to them, hold tight to what you were taught. If you read John's Gospel, you hear that story so clearly in, in the epistles. Uh, they'll deny this very Christ because of the delay. They, they grew weary, they didn't believe anymore and they started thinking friendly. And so they began to deny that the very cross Christ that brought them uh, was real. And immediately, now this is, listen to what it says, bringing swift destruction on themselves. That this, that it, that the judgment of God is intolerant to rejection of Jesus. The heart of God rather is intolerant to the judgment, uh, to the uh, the heart of God is intolerant to the rejection of Jesus, that's what I'm trying to say. In other words. Pay attention to this, this is good. From Adam to Jesus. God did everything he could to bring his people together, to bring his people into relationship with him. He sent the prophets. He sent the judges. He established a monarchy. Okay, and everything that God put in place, the men would find a way to drift away. The law. He gave them the law and their sinful nature made them uh, violate the law, everything they got. But he maintained a level of tolerance for their evil and their wickedness and he kept pressing, trying to bring men to himself. And then finally, after everything failed, he gave his son. Jesus Christ. When Jesus came on the scene, no more options. This is God's final word to bring his people into, uh, reconcile his people into himself. The final word of God for his people is in Christ Jesus. That's it. Okay, he's very intolerant of those who reject him. So the text says, when you, when they, when they deny the master who brought them, it brought swift destruction on themselves. Are you catching, are you catching the picture? I hope I'm not being too intense and scaring y'all. Cause it's very intense. Uh, and, and the reason that it, it's, it's so important to Peter is because, see, we spend a lot, we spend a lot of time trying to think, well, I like that preacher. So he can't be, he can't be a false teacher cause he's so nice and he just love people. I watched the guy, watched the man, um, young, he, he moved from Canada. And came to live where this ministry was. And he told them that, I don't know why he felt like he had to tell them that, but in this big auditorium. And he tells them that. And he said, come down here, come down here. And he get him down there, you sold everything and brought your family. And then he said, our love, we gonna give you fifty thousand dollars and hug you. And the guy said, no, 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 no. He said, don't deny me my blessing. Don't deny me my blessing. No, 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 don't deny me my blessing. He said, what I need, what I wanted, I'm, I'm, I'm getting a job. And I'm, I'm, he, he's trying to bring his family close to the ministry. I'm gonna give you a job, I'm gonna give you a job. I'm sitting there looking at they going. Well. What's wrong with that? Nothing. What's right with it? What's righteous about it? Equally nothing. Jesus said very clearly to the Pharisees, be careful how you practice your piety in public. If I was gonna do all those wonderful things for him, I wouldn't have had to put it on a video for everybody to see. You know? And then the man is saying, I don't want your money, no, 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 I don't want your money, I don't want your money. I just wanna get, I just want a job and I want, I want the spiritual, I want, he said, I'm gonna give you both, I'm gonna give you both. So all of a sudden, this man's migration from Canada and relocating his family, uh, close to the ministry was all about him. The preacher. He's ignoring what this man is saying completely and just dumbing it in, you gonna take my money and I'm gonna give you a job right here. I'm gonna give you everything, he was hugging, he crying, everybody with their hands all up in the air. Like, um, what is this? This, this, this feels like a really nice show and a real good promotional, uh, this, this, this looks like a nice little thing to promote your ministry. You can get it, I need to go, I moved from John County to be near the ministry. With my hands up, give me fifty thousand and a job. Well, what am I saying? Was he being disingenuous? I don't know, I don't know him. What I am saying is Jesus said, you need to beware of how you practice your piety in public. Because public piety says more about you than it does, than it needs to say. Let your light so shine before men that they might see your good works and glorify the Father. Not you. So, so Jesus said, just, just, just keep, you know, it's wonderful what it is. Oh, fifty thousand, relocated his family, that's beautiful, but, but why did we have to have a microphone to do that? Good man, good man, I, I, I don't doubt that, I don't doubt his sincerity. What I'm saying is, you got to do ministry the way Christ instructs us to do ministry. So that it can be of Christ and no other, and when you don't. Then you do something else. And I ain't in the name calling, I'm not gonna call that man no false teacher, no false prophet, that ain't what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to tell you that falsity is not defined in terms of people, it's defined in terms of relationship with Jesus Christ. How obedient are you, are you to what Christ is saying? All of us struggle with trying to be aligned with the Christ, all of us do. And then none of us got it down perfect. But not all of us have a platform. And on social media, all over the world. Now, in line of all of that, look what he says it to, even so, and this is important, this is a transition. Even so, many will follow their debaucheries. And because of these teachers, the way of truth will be maligned. Woo, he started out, let me tell you, he started out with, with twenty some odd members. And now he passing some eighty thousand folk. Yes, he is. Look how the Lord done blessed it, eighty thousand folk. How do you assess that? Now they, we have programs in place, we have programs in place for uh, 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 for mega ministries. Where the pastor will assign uh, several ministers or deacons to a group, a collection, a group, you know? And then they'll report to him and then he, you know, he trains them and they, 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 they meet the people and, you know, that's a very, that's an interesting, uh, interesting model. For doing mega ministry. I don't have a problem with mega ministry at all. Uh, if it's done effectively and done appropriately. So for a man to say to me, I passed the eighty thousand people. Okay, I'm not, I, I, I don't, I don't have any doubts that you do. But what I do raise a question within my mind is. Is I pay attention to the, I pay attention to Jesus. When Jesus came out the mountain, let me tell you what shit now. Everybody wasn't listening, but Stephen was dead on it. He came out the mountain and he says, enter in at the narrow gate. Come in the narrow gate. Very few, it's hard to find, it's restricted, you gotta work hard to find. But when you find it, in every nine days, you'll see somebody along the way. Now he said, now do that other road, the Broadway, many, they don't have, it, it, it's hard to find, everybody there, many, many, many are there. And it leads to destruction. So I'm very concerned when I'm, when I'm listening to ministry and people are putting focuses on numbers. Okay, I think spiritually, charity is more important than numbers. And great numbers is not the implication that you have the great covenant of God. Because many people will follow debaucheries. Things that they like. No? I heard a preacher, man came down, had his hands up. He said, this young man started a business last year and I prayed hands, I laid hands and prayed on this man about his business. And do you know he's doing wonderful this year? And you know why he's doing wonderful? Because he was obedient to his pastor. I said, yes. Did. He anointed his car and, 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 and he anointed his house, he just anointed him down. And there was no way that he could be unsuccessful, all he had to do was be obedient to his pastor. And they just flock into the church. Because he's assured them that through his instructions, you can have, you can have uh, proprietary power. You can have business, you can, you can be successful. But you got, you gotta be obedient to the pastor them. You got to follow the teachers. You see, it's, it's that kind of leverage that concerns me. There may even be some truth in his obedience and his insights. But it's that leverage that bothers me. Jesus never leveraged anything on anybody. He challenged them to be authentic. He told the rich young ruler, go and sell everything you got. And divide it among the poor and then come follow me. You know, he moved that way. So, so he, but he says, even so many, many will, will follow their debaucheries and because of their teachings, the truth will be maligned. What does that mean? The real message is foggy, it's, it's not unclear. And we got preachers that stand in the pulpit and tell you, God wants you to be wealthy. And if you're not wealthy, it's because you're disobedient. You know? The cow don't want a thousand here, but only the Lord, so you get your cow, you get two, three cows and the loaf's to you. False teachers, okay? He says, and in their greed, they will exploit you with deceptive words. Get the idea now? Many will follow these people with all these bizarre teachings, okay? And, and they'll malign the truth, so you can't even see and understand what the truth is. And then in their greed, they'll exploit you. You guys familiar with the pyramid system, uh, pyramid instruction? Where the business, the one on the top, he sponsors folk and everybody he sponsored with, he get a little bit of what they sponsor so that all the money go up. So the man on the top, that's a pyramid, okay? And he'll tell you that if you, if you give upward, then it'll trickle down. You know? You understand? So you gotta bless the pastor. So that people can see how great God is. And if you bless the pastor, then those blessings will come back to you. That's not, that, now that's a good word. The folk can be blessed the pastor, they put money in his feet and carry it all, cause, cause they want their blessing. Now, I don't know if y'all were looking. But I got my boy. What is that preacher name? Um, anyway, I'll just say one preacher, but I know his name, but I'll just say one preacher. He asked for, uh, he was doing an offering, I guess he was gonna help, trying to help somebody. And he had a line, he said, two thousand dollars. The lady come down there, holy, yeah. She was all made up, had her lips all red and she was just coming down and she, and she standing and she gave her mouth low. And he almost, he said, this ain't for twelve hundred dollars. He said, I know. He said, you're not listening. You're not, y'all not listening. He tried to talk to y'all, I'll tell you, y'all not listening. I said, one thousand and one thousand, that's two thousand. This twelve hundred, she was, I'll work on the other eight hundred, you're not listening. First of all, I wouldn't have been in no two thousand dollar line. But if I happened to have been stupid enough to get that line, I said, well, I'll tell you what, give me that back, let me put, put the other head on in there. I got my money and I'm terrible, I didn't know. Bye. And now this is a prominent man. Whining, yeah. Morgan Whiner. He said, Morgan? No, don't let me get the wrong one, it wanted me, but anyway. I just saw that, I was like, wow. That's amazing. And the people were just, I mean, they were just celebrating. And their greed, they'll exploit the people with deceptive words. If you don't do what I'm telling you to do, the condemnation of God gonna fall on you. And see, because, because of their debaucheries, they just, they, the people just believe. Now, someone would say to you, he would say, well, there's something wrong with that, no, it's not. Stay with me, ain't nothing wrong with it. In the last days, many will come claiming. How will, how will? How will the Father know who's really his? How will Christ know who really belongs to him? Certainly, if you're in the two thousand dollar line, you don't know him. And that's what I mean by the remnant. You know, you don't try to destroy that. You through sound doctoring, you observe that and you avoid that. These people have committed themselves to the role that they're taking. Have you committed yourself to the Christ? That becomes a real answer. That's the real problem, the real issue. So a commitment and loyalty to Christ, God, if you, if you were loyal to Christ, you can hear the truth. Because Jesus said, if you abide in my words. There'll be revelations of truth that no other people will have. And you'll be able to, to make, prove that which is perfect. Okay, and then he says, and you'll truly be saved and whom the Son, you'll be truly free and whom the Son sets free is free indeed. That's in John. You know, if you hear my word and remain in my word. There are some promises that safeguard against you this kind of, against this kind of debauchery and maligning of the truth and the exploitation that false teachers live on. Whether we like it or not, there are preachers who start ministries because it's profitable. Their condemnation pronounced against them long ago has not been idle and their destruction is now asleep. What do you mean by that Clarence is? The false prophets of old were condemned to destruction and the judgment of God. And Peter is saying that same condemnation attaches itself to the false teachers of this time, of his time. And likewise in our time. That's why you don't have to spend no time trying to, you need to shut that down, you need to, you need to, we need to exploit these people. We need to let the people know, no, you know, that judgment is already attached to them and quickly happening. Let me tell you something, go back to, go back to the television evangelists, you should get on TV and, and talk all that stuff. Where are they now? What's happening to, where is their line? Where is their ministries now? They were out there, man, uh, bragging about how much money they were making a year and everybody, they got their airplanes. Where they at now? Why are they so quiet now? Because of the judgment of God. You can only stand and, and stand on that mountain called God's pulpit, thinking it's yours and declare your truths for so long. Eventually, because of the judgment that's already been attached to false teachers. Eventually, all will happen, the way it's supposed to happen. Pretty deep, isn't it? That's what I mean, I, I tell the girl that time, it's not, I'm not, I'm not in a hurry to be all over YouTube, I just want to help God's people understand scripture. I'm not interested in that celebrity and that thing y'all trying to do, I don't wanna do that. I'll walk away from that, I, I would walk away from it in a minute because there's nothing inherently sacred about it in the end. You know? It's all show, all, all smoke and mirrors. So he's saying that, that, that judgment is not idle, is not locked into the old days. That if, just like the false prophet of Mo rose among them, false teachers will rise among us and they share the same con- false teachers will arise among us and they share the same condemnation. For if God did not spare the angels when they sinned, but cast them into hell and committed them to chains of deepest darkness, to be kept unto the judgment. Okay, that's angelic judgment. And if he did not spare the ancient world, even though he had, he saved, he, he saved Noah, a herald of righteousness with seven others, when he brought a flood onto the world of ungodly. Okay, you remember that? The first, the first judgment of God against the world, uh, he did that. Okay, and if by turning the cities of Solomon Gomorrah to ashes, he condemned it to destruction and made them an example of what, what, uh, what is coming to the ungodly. Okay, Solomon Gomorrah, the total destruction, this is God dealing, this is God dealing with reactions to false prophecy. He's walking, cause now remember, he started this thing out, trying to show them their ancestors, so he's walking them forward now. God always does what God does when someone does not do what God has called them to do and is living against God's wishes and desires. God does not sleep, he is not not looking, he is not not understanding. That is so important that we understand as believers. And all through, through God's human, the history of God and man, we see it, now look at seven. And if he rescued Lot, a righteous man greatly distressed by the debauchery of the lawless. Okay, for the righteous man living among them day by day after day was tormented in the righteous soul by their lawless deeds that he saw and heard. Lot was in that Solomon Gomorrah, they were letting him have it. And he released him, God got him. Then the Lord knows how to rescue the godly from trial and to keep unrighteousness unto the day of judgment, when they will be punished, especially those who indulge their flesh in depraved lust and who despise authority. He's basically trying to give you a sense of how God reacts to anti-God behavior. And to be quite clear with you, we are now living in an anti-God society and an anti-Christ culture. Where men and women who are innocent of any crimes could be treated as if they were the worst criminals in the world, simply because somebody didn't like them. I was reading, I read a writer who said that evil allowed to be persistently waged against the righteous eventually depletes itself, that evil can sustain itself, that in time, evil will destroy itself, trying to destroy righteousness. And then noted the, the idea of the darkness is always trying to take over the light. But that's totally impossible to happen. I hear that when I read that, when I read this, okay? Peter is simply trying to say to, to them, God has proven himself to be true to his promises and his word. And those who remain true to his promise and his word, they have his, they have his right hand. Those who decide to do other things. And he's trying to make a point, if, if you, if you listen to these preachers, these people, these false teachers telling you these things that don't belong to Christ, telling you these things, this is what's gonna happen. His righteous judgment is his love. Because if he didn't do that, then those who are loyal to him would have no justice. So he has no other choice, the justice of God is to judge them. That the righteous might have the promises of God. This is really deep. I'm enjoying this. This is blessed, be, be your good, okay? All right, bold and willful, they are not afraid to slander the glorious ones. Whereas angels, though greater in might and power, do not bring against them a slanderous judgment. And this is interesting, this, this, this particular, um, paragraph, right after he finished talking about how, how low down folk can be. And what happens, he, he, he starts to look now at how some people, these false teachers can be very bold and willfully bold about what they think and, and this, and not afraid to, like I told you, I hear preachers contradict Jesus. That ain't, that ain't, that ain't, that ain't what Jesus meant when he said that. Or how about this one, I don't, I don't, I don't trust everything the Apostle Paul says. You know, I mean, he got some good things, there's something he said, I, I, I don't know about that, okay? Even the angels wouldn't do that. But these false teachers are bold and willful and they'll slander the glorious ones. The angels, greater in might and in power, they don't bring against them a slanderous judgment. They don't do that. These people, hi, I'm talking about the false teachers, are like irrational animals, mere creatures of instinct. Born to be caught and killed. Now, listen to this language that he's talking about now, he's not really talking about going to cut folk, he is stabbing folk. What he's saying, he's speaking hy- hyper, hypo, hyperbolically. He's giving you an example, like when you say, woo, it's hot, it's devil in here. Now, everybody knows, you don't know about no devil like that, okay? But your point is, is something really bad, it's real hot. And he's saying that something, these people act like they have no regard for God, no respect, no reverence for God. He said, they're like, they're like wild animals and the only way you can handle them is you gotta just treat them like wild animals. That's pretty much what he's trying to say. They move purely on their instinct. Like those, those prophetesses. Who stand in the pulpit and they, they instinctively can tell things about people and, and they'll just go for it like, God, God told me to tell you, you know? And they may have seen a bump on your lip right there and they might think you might have some kind of infection going on in your body. So, God told me to tell you, despite that infection, he knows what you're going through. You sitting there going, how she know I have infection? Well, I like this one. When you having cardiac problems, uh, 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 or blood pressure problems, you usually see swelling of the ankle and feet. You know, it's, it's visibly, it's swelling, you can see it. I, I struggle with that, uh, with my trash man, I have to make sure I, I wipe, if I get too much sodium in my body, okay? Too much sodium, your man gonna be getting my big old head, okay? Feet be all fed up, I would know, scared of the other like an elephant, say, oh my Jesus, okay? Whose foot is these? You know, that kind of thing, right? Well, then these prophetesses will stand in the pulpit and look down and see this woman got some problems. Stop it, God told me to tell you, and then they go to doing that, okay? And you know, you, you know you ain't took your medication. You know you shouldn't ate that coke yesterday. And you just get the hallelujah and huckabuckin and, and carry on. And, 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 you see, it's, that's, that's kind of where they act, they act on instinct. And so you, you just got, you know, your pastor says, pause it, there's something about them, there's, there's dangerous people in the, in the body. You can see that, they slander what they do not understand. Start talking about Jesus. Cause Oprah Winfrey says, there's more than one way to get to God, Jesus is not the only way. And people who say that he's the only way is because they're the poor people. Christianity is for poor people, she said. So, wow, girl. So what they don't understand, they slander, they just, you know, they just, it doesn't matter to them, okay? Um, we'll, 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 we'll pause right there, we'll come back and pick it up right there, cause there's so much more. The implication goes so much further, so we'll put a P in, uh, at the, the verse twelve. We'll, we'll pick it up from verse twelve, but I just want you guys to recognize, and I'm trying to take some time, uh, to make sure that you can hear, um, not just hear what Peter is saying, but hear how it's really real in the way that we live. So when we start talking about false teachers, we sometimes, we get caught up in that, that voodoo mentality. And so I think that people are doing all kinds of thing with crystal balls and bones and things like that, that's the extreme. Okay, but there are false teachers inside the body, because they don't grab hold to Jesus with clarity that teach false doctrine. And that false doctrine causes destruction. And that's what Peter is warning them against. So he has to be very graphic and, and very descriptive about it, so that they won't miss it. Because it's so subtle, notice he says, they will secretly bring in destructive opinions. You hear that, I love Jesus too, but God give us, now God give us, now he give us a, a common sense. You ever heard him say that? I love Jesus like as much as anybody, but God give you common sense to use your mind and make decisions. Well, Jesus, Jesus kind of teaching is, I already decided, do you believe? Your decision is to choose me again and again and again. Wow, okay. I had a good time. I hope I've been helpful, at least made you think, okay? Uh, don't allow the gospel to arm you to harm, but let it arm you to seek. Perhaps if you abide in this word, you'll see what others cannot see or have not yet seen. And celebrate the fact that God has given you an opportunity to seek. Those of you who are viewing us by way of our, our YouTube channel, we appreciate your support, uh, on Betty's two P M study session. Many of you are, are retired or you're not at work or even at work and you'll stop and pause with us and give us that hour. I appreciate that. God bless your hearts and we'll see you next time out. Betty sends her love.
Well, it seems our time in the Zoom room has come and gone. We look forward to seeing you again on next Wednesday at two P M here in Betty's Zoom room. Would you consider subscribing to our YouTube channel? And if you do, be sure and ring the bell, so that the notification can go out every time we open the book. God bless your hearts and we'll see you when we see you.